Cat TV is celebrating 30 years of community media. Help support Cat TV's next 30 years by becoming a member today. Your membership will help us continue covering meaningful, local content. Thank you for supporting your local community media station.
Twenty-two at seven oh two P M. Apologize, we're a couple of minutes late. Our border health meeting ran a couple of minutes late tonight, a little longer than we thought. I'd like to call the meeting to order. A roll call. Mike Gardner.
Angie Rawling.
Harry Percy.
Brian Harris.
And Bob Jarvis is absent tonight. I'd like to approve the agenda. Approval of the minutes, minutes of March tenth, twenty twenty-two. Corrected minutes of May twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-one. Board of Health Meeting Minutes of March eighteenth. Warrants. Excess weight permits. We're going to take off the school bus contract number seven. Transfer station rate increase discussion will be with Tom Shuey. Annual control dog kennel and dog census of twenty twenty-two. Historic Preservation Commission. V H B results from the former pound of landfill, Tom will probably in for that. So could we move that to eight A so that if Tom wants to speak on that, he's there for both of them?
That'd be the best thing.
Everybody, everybody okay with that? Okay.
Yep.
Boards and commissions appointments, which tonight are the Planning Commission and the Development Review Board. Select board topic assignments. Town Hall update. R F Ps. Executive session for personnel. Public comment and adjourn. I'll entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
I'll make a motion.
Second it.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
So carried. Minutes of March tenth, twenty twenty-two, select board meeting.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion or corrections? They look good to me. Um, all those in favor?
Aye.
Abstain.
Corrected minutes of May twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-one sewer commission meeting.
Is that supposed to be twenty twenty-two?
No, May twenty-seven, twenty twenty-two hasn't come yet. It's twenty twenty-one.
We're being proactive.
I'm sorry, Tara.
It was specifically section five. There was a correction in the wording.
Okay.
So moved.
I saw that actually. Second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any abstentions?
I think I'm supposed to abstain because I wasn't there for that.
Perfect. Uh, Board of Health Meeting Minutes, March eighteenth, twenty twenty-two.
So moved.
Second it.
Uh, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, abstain.
Warrants. Payroll ending three eighteen. The amount of seventeen thousand, three hundred and forty-two dollars and sixty-eight cents.
So moved.
Second it.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Payroll ending three twenty. Fourteen thousand, forty-three dollars, seventy-four cents.
So moved.
Second it.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Accounts payable three eighteen to three twenty-five.
So moved.
Oh, hold on. This is a different one.
Because we have to separate manually some things that were entered on wrong dates.
Okay, this is my accounts payable.
Yes.
Okay, I thought it was payroll, sorry. Um, accounts payable is different than what we got, sorry. The, the amount that was given to us was fifty-four thousand, five hundred and forty-five dollars and eighty cents. The adjusted amount is forty-six thousand, seven fifty-one, fifty-three. A difference of seventy-seven, ninety-four, twenty-seven.
With the changes, so moved.
Second it.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. So carried, sorry. Excess weight permits. I'll read these off. You want to do them as a group, right?
Yes.
Okay. West Oil. Um, C A M P precast. Uh, Gurney Brothers Construction. R K Miles. Rabidou Holdings. Uh, New England Quality Service. Uh, David Chaves Excavating, Chavis, sorry. Valley Crane Services. Beacon Sales Acquisition. And that's it. For excess weight permits.
A motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Whoa.
Sorry.
That's all right. As, as everyone can see, we're in the Newtown office. Oh, this is our first official select board meeting in the Newtown office. And believe it or not, we find light switches that we're not sure sometimes where they go.
That's super bright.
So we're still on the learning curve, that's for sure.
That's better, thank you. That's okay.
Um, next up is Tom Shuey with the transfer station rate increase discussion. You can sign those after.
Mm-hmm.
Weight permits. Did we all sign them or just?
No, I'm just.
So I thought.
I'll make sure.
Sign the warrants though.
Yeah. Make sure she.
Now, Tom.
Good evening again. It's a good evening again.
It is a good evening. I just want to tell you, I got this notification on Tuesday morning about this enormous increase that we're gonna, we're going to sell us. And seeing they have Monopoly, we don't have much of an alternative. Uh, I mean, did you guys take a look at the letter or not?
Yeah, yes, I did.
Well, you know, it's a, I have, on the, on the dump fees, it's a, it's a twenty-two percent increase, what we were paying.
That's what the town's gonna incur from Casella is a twenty-two percent increase?
Yes.
Okay.
Basically.
What I, what I want to make sure of, Tom, for, for everybody that's watching, is I want to make sure that we, we say that the town's incurring a twenty-two percent increase from Casella, but the town is gonna increase dump fees or potentially X number of percentage. I, I just want to make sure there's no confusion.
No, that, that's, that's, that's good, Mike, seriously.
Yeah.
And then what happened was the hauling, and I did, I did call this Killian Flynn about this. I said, you know, we're going up seventy dollars, which is a thirty-eight point nine percent. And I said, this is ludicrous. I said, from my house to the transfer station is five and a half miles. It's not a half mile down to, down to your, your transfer station down here. So I said, you know, this is ridiculous. I said, you know, it doesn't add up. We should walk, pay over five dollars a gallon, six dollars. I said, you need three gallons at most, you know, even, even five, even if you get five mile a gallon, which I'm sure they get, because they're coming in empty one way, you know? And, you know, I just, I said, we gotta do something about this. This is ridiculous, you know? So, I mean, as far as, as far as that goes, what I, what I did is I took last month's, um, I took last month's bill. I mean, it's a short month. This is, this is the slowest month we have, this February, how many times, short. And besides that, a lot of people aren't coming, we had lousy weather, so. But what it amounts to overall, what I did is I extrapolated all of the numbers, you know, the new numbers, what the, what the tonnage was and everything, and what the, the, the trucking, the hauling costs and so forth. And I came down to, it was a, it was actually a twenty-seven and a half percent increase overall. When you put the two together, that's pretty much what it's gonna average out to. So I was correcting the numbers yesterday, man, I don't think it was. And I looked at our, our current price, price list. Now, to be, to be quite honest, we have only had just rather modest increases in the, in the dump fees over the course of time, with the exception of mattresses. They've gone crazy. So, uh, if you, if you look down at my thing here, the, the mattresses, I think I went to, to twenty dollars with them. Maybe I didn't, maybe I didn't put it in there.
Mattresses have, um, eleven dollars, or no, let's stop chairs.
They're charging us forty. They're charging us forty, sometimes twenty, sometimes twenty-five, the smaller ones, they're charging us forty. And I, and I feel that, uh, we can't charge forty, because how many are we gonna be picking up along the road for free?
Look how much garbage is on the side of the road now.
It's, yeah, well, exactly. I mean, you know, Joel and I have gone out and picked up some, you know, that have been out someplace else for, it looks like for years, and we are gonna pick them up on Jackson Cross Road, stink out of us. You know, but we, we picked up a couple of them in that Indiana massacre road, the second thing, you know, places like that. So what I'm presenting to you is if we do a fifteen percent, a twenty percent, or a twenty-five, which I wouldn't recommend, because it's gonna be really, really expensive for the, for the town, town folk. You know, we have a lot of people that are retired that come to the transfer station, you know, and use the facility.
So, so just so that everyone's clear, column, the first column is what we're currently charging.
Right. The first column is the current charge, then the next one is a fifteen percent increase, and a twenty percent increase, and a twenty-five.
Well, I, I just want everyone to be clear on that, Tom, because we will, I'm gonna have, um, this posted on the website after our discussion, um, tonight. With whatever we decide, I'm gonna have this posted. So I just want to make sure that the taxpayers all know that the first column, even though it's not, there's no heading, that is what we're currently charging.
It should have put an increase thing on there.
That's okay. No, it's, it's fine. That's fine. I'm, I'm good with that. I just, like I said, I just, for the people who are watching right now, and anybody that's concerned, they can come back and look at that and say that column one, or the first column, is what we're currently charging, and then they can see the fifteen, twenty, twenty-five percent.
Yeah.
That's fine.
It just, uh, Ford, Ford and me the other day, I just.
Yeah, no, it's fine.
But I mean, to get, to get increases such as this is pretty, uh, pretty high, I think, at one shot.
Right. No, I agree.
I mean, if we'd have seen smaller increments as they're going up, okay.
Right.
But don't come throwing twenty to thirty percent increases on us. That, that's just, that isn't right.
I, I don't disagree. Unfortunately, we're.
We're stuck.
Yeah.
We're no option.
We don't, our, our option bank is pretty, pretty well bankrupt right now, so that's fine.
I under, I understand. So this is what I wanted to bring to your attention as soon as possible. But I talked to Tara about getting on the agenda tonight. I just felt it was something that, that we really all needed to look at, and you guys make your decision. But I don't know if you want to put it out on the website and try to see if we get any response from the town as what they want to do. But it's just unbelievably expensive. It's just, it's a tremendous increase. I was floored. I was absolutely floored.
I'm not, um. Unfortunately, it's across the board, everywhere and everything.
Yeah, I mean, we, we all know that. We were all suffering.
Yes.
You know?
Yeah.
And.
Ten cents in a day.
I'm not, I'm not opposed to, um. I think, when, when was the last increase that you had, Tom?
Uh, we've had these, these prices been, uh, this last year and a year before.
So it's been, this will be.
This is, it's been, this will be three, this will be three years if we go through.
Three years.
Okay. Yeah, so I mean, what it is, it would be, you know.
So are, if I heard you correctly, our increase, the, the town is gonna incur from, for an everyday basis is twenty-two percent, basically?
No, it's actually, it's actually twenty-five. The, the total, the total comes out to like, the total when we had, we had up the whole month, it came out to twenty-seven and a half.
Oh, okay, okay. All right, that's right. I'm sorry.
Twenty-seven and a half.
That's for Tony.
I mean, if you only make a copy of this.
No, no, I, you, we already have that. I read that. I, I just had the wrong number in my head.
But I mean, this is what, uh, I was working numbers all over the place yesterday, and we're quite busy anyhow, for Wednesday, really.
What, um, what is your, because, because you're the manager of the transfer station, basically? What is your recommendation, Tom, because this affects you, you and your budget directly?
Yeah, I mean, we're gonna be upside down no matter what we do. You know, you can't, you can't make this kind of thing up unless, unless we went twenty-seven and a half percent. And that's not.
No, I agree.
That's not fair. That's not fair to our, our situation here, you know?
Yeah, no, I agree. So what, what would your recommendation be if we were to, if we were to vote for an increase?
I would, I would say, look at the. It's, it's a hard, it's a tough call. It's either go with the fifteen or the twenty right now, and then go to another one next year. So, but I would, I would start this, this start, this goes at the beginning of April. I'd wait till the beginning of July and the, and the new fiscal year, just implement these. But I, I think that that's what we're gonna have to do. It'd be one or the other, and that's up to you guys, you know? But I, I really don't want to hit them with twenty percent. I mean, you see what some of these prices are going up. I mean, some of these.
Yeah, no, I saw.
I mean, our, our big, our biggest, our two biggest items that we have in, in this thing are the thirteen gallon bags and the thirty gallon bags. So we're going up fifty cents, twenty-five cents, and fifty cents, which proportionally is, right. I mean, what I did, I rounded up and rounded down. You know, a double and a half cents difference, I rounded up and down, whichever it was, was coming out there. So that's what we put in here. And then you get up to like the, uh, the forty-five gallons, you know, which are big, the contractor bags and stuff, they would go from five dollars to five seventy-five at fifteen, and then the next year, possibly go up to twelve, and we'll see what happens. You know, here's the thing about the, the fuel surcharge and stuff that they're saying about, you know, trucking costs, or everything going up, it didn't go up that high.
No, I agree. Yeah, I agree with you.
Didn't go up that high. That's just, uh, that's fine.
But I think with these prices, any of the fifteen, twenty, or the twenty-five, this is reasonable compared to having somebody pick up your trash.
Yes.
By far, for the townspeople.
I'm, I'm sure, I'm sure it is. I don't have to make your charging now, but, but I'm sure you're right, Angie, seriously.
So, I mean, unfortunately, we have to do it, but we are still very reasonable.
Fifteen or the twenty percent this year, and then you're gonna have to bump it up next year, I suppose.
What is the pleasure of the board? Do you have any more questions for Tom? I think he's got a pretty good presentation here, and I don't think, I don't think there's a.
Yeah, this has nothing to do with Tom. I mean, this is just.
Right, well, right. And I don't, and I don't.
I don't think there's, I'm not elected, you are. You gotta make the tough choices.
I'm not sure that.
I just present this to you.
I'm not sure there's a whole lot of discussion.
On this, because, because the, the, there's the discussion, the only discussion is what percentage we vote increase.
Yeah.
Because, because we have to, um, or, or not. We don't, we, I guess we don't have, we can do this.
I'm curious to know what, if you know what our estimated shortfall would be if we left it at current rate?
I didn't, I didn't go the whole, I didn't do the whole thing.
And I don't think you have a lot of time. You got this.
Well, no, 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 I know.
I'll tell you what.
I know Tom's really thorough, so I wouldn't have surprised if he had it or not.
I can go back, I'll tell you what I'll do. I'll go back a year, all right, by quarters, and my quarterly reports. I'll go back a year, right from, uh, you know, again, December to, to last January, you know? I'll go back there and see what, uh, see what the totals are, because I've got all the numbers. I can see what we're, we're going with, with the things, and I can see what, I'll have to go with the, um, the bag prices and so forth. And I, actually, I have the annual thing from last year, which, which went from December, you know, at the end of the year. I have our, my annual, uh, it's called a P L U report, and I have each, each one, how many items we did, you know, and so forth, and that's where I was.
Average counted.
I found this out, you know, and we did like forty-five thousand items last year, which is, two guys running things, that's pretty impressive, you know, really? To handle that for three days a week, for a hundred and fifty days, you know? And so that's a lot of stuff coming through.
So, so I guess what, the way I look at, the way I look at that then, the pleasure of the board would be to hold off on voting an increase until Tom gives us that report at the next board meeting? Because I, I, and I agree with your, I agree with your implementation timeframe, July one, new fiscal year, bring it then, so we have time to figure out what we're gonna do for an increase. I don't like table and things, I hate it, but I don't think we're table, and we're just asking for more information.
Right.
And I'd like to go to the next board meeting and then, and then handle it then, bang, done.
That gives me what, two weeks?
Two weeks.
Yeah, well, I, I.
I, I know, but, but I, I don't like to table stuff. Um, I want to handle it now while it's here.
Right.
But I also, I also think Brian has a really good point. He, he's looking for some more information.
Yeah.
And I think I'd like to.
That's not a problem. I just, I just did this, this is what I could do yesterday, basically.
No, I, I get that, Tom, sure. So, so I think we'll, we'll hold off on what we, um, on what we do. I think we could probably put this on our, put this on our website.
Yep.
Yeah.
For people to see.
What the potential changes are gonna be of what we vote on right now, and then once we finalize what we vote on at the next board meeting, we can change that.
Right.
And go with what it is.
Highlight the column.
I was gonna say, and I think the communication that you got from Casella outlined what the cost increases should go with, so they know who to blame.
No, I, I agree. I, I think.
Because I don't want them to think like, oh, we're just upping the price, upped the price.
I, I think that, that cover letter that you gave us with the increases from Casella and the increases in our trucking should go with this.
Right.
So that we can, so people know that, you know, hey, we're back into the.
Phone calls.
Yeah.
Okay. Are we comfortable with that? So we'll, we'll act on this next, we'll.
The trucking's a big thing.
We'll put Tom on the agenda for the next board meeting, um, with some more information. You won't have to produce this again, you already have.
I would do that. You'll have it, I'll have it done beforehand, you'll have an opportunity to view it before I, before I present it to the public.
Awesome. Thank you so much, Tom.
Thank you so much, Tom.
You're welcome.
We moved, we moved our agenda.
We bumped you up, so you don't have to wait around.
Well, that's marvelous of you. I appreciate it.
We bumped, well, we bumped the, um, landfill V H B results. Do you want to?
I'm sorry, I didn't know if the other meeting, I came in here, you have to print some stuff, and then I don't have the new code, so, right? I can't even do that.
Do you want to, do you want to be part of the, um, V H B results on the former landfill, on the water?
You, oh, I have, I have, I didn't bring those with me. I didn't know that was on the agenda.
Yep, yep.
Oh, yeah, I'll, I'll stick around for that too, certainly.
Yeah, we figured.
I printed those all out. If I'd known that, I'd have brought my copy over.
Well, we can get a copy. I'm trying. We'll get you a copy.
I probably, if I find it here, it's seventeen pages long.
There's got a couple of trees with it.
Yeah. Yeah, I don't want to, I don't.
Gotta find my copy.
I don't have much timber.
Yeah, we're, we're gonna work on that. That's something.
Yeah.
Have a downfall, right?
Right here, Kurt. It's right here from.
The whole thing.
Okay. Well, I, seventy-two pages back, I believe. Nine per, both sides, so save, it did save stuff.
So do you want to give us this presentation? I might move you up here just because you're familiar with it, so.
Is he the other fella supposed to?
Oh, really? Kurt, was Kurt coming into this meeting, do you know?
In or not?
Kurt said he was going to tune in at seven thirty, so about five minutes from now.
Okay.
Okay, then let's, um, come on, boy, I don't want to move the agenda around. I don't know if we can.
Well, we can let Tom talk about it at first.
Yeah, well, you know, I, I would actually rather have these guys talk about it than I can ask questions on their stuff.
Oh, okay.
Well, I can, I can gather on this, that, uh, the residential wells, there really wasn't significant P F, P F O A's or anything on there.
That's where I got from.
Which was the best thing, because I was looking around, uh, like Stan Kimball wanted to know what his was and stuff. Well, I, I kind of assumed which one was it, but I looked at all the residential wells, and they all seemed to come in pretty good shape as far as that was concerned. But I think we have to ask, uh, we have to ask him, I don't know what we're gonna do, you know, when we're gonna get together, uh, for these other wells. I assume we didn't get anything from, uh, Dr. Sale, any permission.
Oh, that's true.
Correct?
I, I don't think so. Not that I'm aware of, anyway.
I think we got it from Colmar or Salem, right? Last time they told us, or.
This whole, this whole packet from Kurt Muller, this whole.
I was, I was dealing with, uh, I was dealing with Steven there, uh, about getting Pam Stones, and finally she came in. I said, Pam, I didn't answer his call. I said, I already gave him permission. You could have called and said, I already gave you permission, you can test my water anytime, you know, but she didn't. But that's okay. We, you know, it just held us up a little bit, so he, they've got the permission from everybody and so forth. But what I think we need to do is we're gonna have to get over where these well placements are gonna be, because a lot of these, they, they had pretty much formulated right in a gravel pit, which you can't have, you know? That's, that's not gonna work. These are some of the deeper wells. Now, in the back section of the, uh, of the, the highway department, the old, the old pit's back there. Well, perhaps there, or even behind the, where the, the fuel tank is, where it's a wet, it's kind of a wet land there, and, uh, and that there's Christmas trees or whatever, somebody planted in there years ago, whatever. I mean, they could put those things there if they, if they wanted, you know? I mean, you can't, they have them drawn right in the middle of this thing. It's not, no, no, it's not gonna happen. I just, I talked to Joel about that, and he said, oh, absolutely not. You know, we, we just can't do it. And then they move it up closer, it's gonna be close to our one original monitoring well, so it doesn't make much sense. They already have a, like a forty-foot well there, you know?
Kurt Muller just joined us.
Perfect. Did you let him in?
Yes.
Perfect.
There he is. You're muted.
Yep. Good evening. How we all doing?
Okay.
We're good, thank you.
Good. Um, so I was told to show up at seven thirty. Are you ready for me?
We, we are.
Yeah, we turned a little bit there.
Okay. I gave myself two minutes to spare. I'm glad I didn't, didn't delay. Um, so I, I, I understand that Megan is, is now, I'm working with Megan directly, and I have not yet Meg, yet met Megan, but, um, she wanted me to come to the meeting. Just to give a quick update, um, and I guess tell you about next steps and where, uh, you know, what we can, what we can look for months. So, uh, first things first, as you recall, the last time we met, we were, uh, seeking approval to do that, that round of groundwater, I'm sorry, drinking water sampling, that next round of drinking water sampling. We did that, and the data came back consistent with the first round, which is really good news, meaning all of the, the locations that we sampled, including one new one, all were below the standard, and in most cases, the concentrations were actually a little bit lower. I'm gonna share my screen for a second and show you, uh, the map of where we sampled. Um, and, uh, show you the results. Just give me a moment here. Could, um, somebody allow me to share?
Megan, can you allow him to share, please?
Yes, no problem.
Well, when that, when that, um, still don't have access to share, but I can just walk through it verbally.
We have a copy of it.
Yeah, I think you want to show for everyone else.
Yeah, it's very difficult to see. The color thing, if he has it.
Right.
Far, far easier to view.
So, the long and the short is, you're never gonna have exactly the exact same numbers. Typically looking for the same order of magnitude, and that, in this case, that's what we have. Um, the one D W nine eighty-one, which was up in the, um, up in the northern portion, kind of northeast corner, that dropped by about half. I wouldn't look too far into that. Um, it's, it's not uncommon with seasonal variation, groundwater level, you'll have some change. But the biggest takeaway here is we have two rounds of data that consistently show all the wells that are in the immediate vicinity, drinking water wells, although have some, you know, have been impacted, they're not at a concentration that is either increasing uh, or at a concentration that is of concern, because it doesn't, it doesn't exceed the standard. So that's a, that's a really strong argument for, hey, you know, um, although we still need to determine the extent of where these PFOS contaminants are in groundwater, we're pretty darn confident that they're not getting to drinking water, and they're, you know, I'm gonna make the case essentially that ultimately, when we define the extent through this next round of investigation, We should just continue to monitor these wells on an annual basis and, and, and keep our fingers crossed that they remain below the standard. The alternative is quite a bit more expensive where there's active remediation going on and frankly, you know, it might be there, but we're not dealing with something that's causing a risk to human health or the environment. Nobody's drinking this water. It's, that's um, impacted water in the shallow groundwater. Nobody's gonna put a well to five feet in the, in the, in the landfill and drink that water, so.
Come on.
Point that I'm trying to make is I think the direction this may end up going is what we call monitor natural attenuation. I E. There's, you know, over time, it will degrade and we just need to continue to monitor it to make sure it's not increasing. So, but that, that again, doesn't get us out of, we still need to determine the extent of the impact. So, as we talked about the last round. There is additional investigation that we need to do to determine how far these contaminants have migrated. So, I have.
Are you able to share, Kurt?
I will try now. Yes, I am. Thanks, Megan. Did everybody see my screen?
Yes.
So, the, the last time we met, we had um, we, we discussed the challenges we were having with the, the owner of this property, the salmon property. And we had um, we tried to gain access. Essentially, we couldn't and, and we are, are, we're not bothering at this point anymore. They're, they're really not responsive. Really gonna focus, as, as the data suggested, the most impacted groundwater is located in this forested wetland. And so when we look at the, the potentiometric map, which is basically which direction groundwater is flowing. We see that on this part, part of the landfill, groundwater is flowing towards the northwest. This, this, this wet, this wetland is a low spot and so groundwater over here is migrating towards this wetland. And to the north, it's, it's a little bit flatter. The point that I'm trying to make is they're really, we don't really gain much by putting wells all the way out here. And at one point, DEC had suggested that to determine the downgrading extent, and we made the argument and said, look, that is actually upgrading. We're, we're draining into a low spot, which is this forested wetland. Why are we gonna put a well out here and spend another, you know. Fifteen to ten, fifteen grand or whatever, putting wells along here. It's not worth it. They bought into that and so we're really just gonna focus, ideally, we'd be able to put a couple of these pismeters. These pismeters are uh, shallow wells. You can put them in with a hand auger. You can pound them in with a jackhammer. They don't require a drill rig, cause the groundwater is really, really shallow here. And so, yeah, ideally, we'd love to be able to put one on the salmon property here. It's not gonna happen. Really gonna focus here to say, okay, the impacts that are here, are they migrating in this direction? But they're not gonna migrate much past there, because that is, again, an up gradient position here. Those are pismeters. Additionally, there are two deeper wells. If you recall, the last time we met, there was this escar feature, this subterranean. River feature that we were concerned that the contaminant is migrating to the northwest and south, I'm sorry, the southwest and northeast here. And so, the state was, was looking to have us delineate the extent of the impacts that were found here and here by putting these two wells in. The state, again, they also requested wells over here, but using that same argument to say that's up gradient, going in that direction. We were able to, to, to lose those two wells and not, you know, install them. So basically, the two deeper wells that we're gonna need to use a sonic rig again with are the two wells that are here.
Those are, you're, what you were talking about earlier, correct, Tom?
Yeah, yeah. This, uh, this, this one is just, just to the, uh, for your cursorys. Well, that one. Had, had to go over to the left more, go to the, the west more. The other one, we had to come up all closer to the borderline, because this is, this is where we get our gravel and sand. Where you have that one. So we can't put one in right that way. Yeah. The, the furthest one east there. Yeah, that one, that one could go a little bit further west, could probably be better. And we'd have to, we'd have to go over with the uh.
The one that's closer to the buildings themselves, I think, Kurt, yeah, that one.
Yeah, that right there, we cannot put that one there. Absolutely can't, because that's, that's where they, they see how much dirt there is there. They gotta be dating back through. They, they, they've got several years of uh, of dating right there to do. So, you know, that can't be there. Now, if you would like to put it down there between the building someplace, we could probably do something there between the, the two longways, you know, was it parallel each other?
Yep.
That, that may work. We'd have to, we'd have to get that uh, we'd have to get that covered with the, the highway department. Okay, that is, that is our ground there, but yeah, the other one's just definitely not gonna work.
Okay, and, and these were um, these aren't set in stone. You know, we can, we can field, we can field determine where they go. Uh, but it's good to know that, you know, this one would actually probably be located almost a hundred feet to the north. Um, I mean, it's still, it's, it's within that escar feature. It's a little further down gradient, but if we, it, it gives us a better chance of having a clean well. To say, okay, it's definitely not migrating down here. We're good. It's, it's, it's isolated to this area. Okay, it's a little bit over in this forested wetland, but it hasn't gone that far. And, you know, I, I want this to be, I wanna start to make the argument to say, look. We're not sampling anymore in terms of delineation. You know, we have property owners that aren't willing to let us on. We've done what we can. Let's get to the next step here. So, I'm trying to close the door on this, this whole investigation piece and, and I think we have a, you know, we have a good argument for that.
Yeah, are you still dealing with Sean on this?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, and he's been quite reasonable, but he's, you know, he takes a fairly conservative approach, you know, and typically if. You know, a down gradient means further away. Well, if, if the topography and the groundwater flow isn't going all the way, you know, in that direction. I, I, I just wanted to really push that back on him, because there were, in my opinion, four wells that he was proposing that really weren't necessary. And so he, he ultimately acquiesced and what I'm presenting tonight is essentially what we wrote up in a work plan, which we're then gonna send to him. To get approved, and that's the next piece of this, which point we modify the, the loan agreement with CWS RF. To add this phase and we're off to the races in the next, you know, month or so. In addition to, in addition to the new wells and new pismeters, so seven new pismeters, two new wells. We're then gonna sample the entire network of wells again to get a new round of data. That's gonna serve two purposes. One, it's gonna deal with the solid waste requirements for your landfill. And, and, and Tom, were you dealing with Buzz Cirillo?
Yes.
Did you hear the sad news?
No.
Unfortunately, very unexpectedly, Buzz Cirillo passed away two weeks ago.
Oh, no, no.
A really healthy guy, was at the gym, finished a workout, fell over in front of his locker, fifty-five years old.
No one cared.
Uh, he, he, he was such a nice guy. That first time we all got up there and so forth like that, we, we had a great time together. We really did.
He was a phenomenal individual and I, I don't mean to break, be the bearer of bad news, but um, I wanted you to be aware of that and they're looking for a replacement, but. There was that connection where we were covering the, the PFOS component of this sampling. And so that next round will cover the, the landfill requirement for the PFOS component. So we're doing one big round of groundwater sampling with this. So that's all of the, well, the network is what the DEC had requested.
Yeah, but I'll tell you, they're gonna miss Buzz. I, yeah, he was, he was more than reachable with us.
I, I, yeah.
Yeah, he was, he was a good guy. He always did my reviews on my closed landfill and my other, you know, and my transfer station stuff, you know. He, he was a good guy. Really, 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 really sad to hear that.
I'm sorry to be the bearer, but it's, yeah, I was, I wanted you to know.
I, I appreciate it. I really do, Kurt.
So, this is an important sample though, even though we can't get to the salmon property. This is a, this is a, a, a water of the state. So if we are able to pull from the roadway. Grab a water sample here. The reason this is important is because everything feeds into this north branch and east branch in terms of flow. And if this comes back clean, we know that it's not, you know, it may be here. We may not be able to get on here to get these samples, but we know that it's at least contained. And so, so this was one that we should be able to get, even though we don't have access, just from the roadway. Um, so that was one other thing I didn't mention in the, in the, but that's one other, that's another one that we're gonna try to get.
Well, what's our, what's our right of way from, from the side of the road there, from Strohmeyer?
Oh, the, the right of way for the town?
Yeah.
I don't know what it is exactly over there. I know it's a week twenty-five.
It, it might be possible for just to put it on the right of way, so we don't really need anything.
Well, they just do a sample there, right, Kurt?
Just pulling out of the river, south to stream.
You're pulling out of the stream or you're gonna put a, put one of those.
We're gonna pull it right out of the stream. We'll do a grab right out of the stream.
That's what I thought.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, usually right down off the bad side there, either side is being a right of way.
Right, exactly.
Don't have a problem with that.
Yep. Sorry, I've got you. Oh, what's going on with my PDF? There we go. Um, yeah, that's the plan, is to take it from the, I, I don't wanna go on, on his property after he explicitly essentially ignored. Our access agreement after we began negotiations, so um. Yeah, so that's, that's, that's the last piece of it. So.
The Salem, the Salem property that we don't have access to, right?
Correct. Strohmeyer, we do. This is the Strohmeyer, this, this lot up here.
Right.
And they're great.
Mm-hmm.
So, um, I've essentially put this into a, a formal work plan. That's what gets approved by DEC. Once that gets approved. Then, then there's a cost estimate associated with it. We'll get, we'll, we'll all share this all with you to then, you know, once we're approved. Then we send it up the ladder to the CWS RF and then there'll be a, what they call a minor, uh, minor loan amendment. That then would then augment this phase into the loan agreement. And this is a new year, so that subsidy of, you know, one fifty percent. Would continue for this. Um, and so that's really the next phase. And once we get approval there, we'll be putting holes in the ground, I would suspect. Probably in late April, early May, depending on how quickly they get back to me.
Okay.
Any questions?
No, I.
This is really revised from the last one we had, correct?
It, it is, yeah. The last one we had had wells up in here and wells over here. We really tried to truncate it to shave some cost off.
If you send me a copy of that, I'd appreciate it.
Yeah, I'm gonna say that, but what my, and, and this is, I guess, a request. My plan would be to have DEC and Pownell do a concurrent review. Of this draft work plan. That doesn't mean, if, if you find something that you want me to modify, I can absolutely do it. No, it's just getting comments back at the same time, so it's not delayed a month.
Yeah, well, I mean, my, my biggest concern right now is the placement of these two wells. That, that, that's my biggest concern right now. I'm gonna be able to show it to Joel and discuss where we can go with the things. The one on the western side is gonna be, you know, in the, in the road or, or not. I think it may be eventually. We'll have to see. But the one, the one on the east definitely has, that's where direct taking stuff at.
So, Tom, how about I, how about I just share that, this PDF with you and even if you just take a pen and mark it up and tell me, you know, this. I'll tell you, if, if X's are possibilities, give me a few options. Just take a photograph of it with your phone, send it back to me.
That'd be super.
Great. I'll do that the second I get off the phone.
I'll look at it tomorrow morning.
I, I think it's great news for us, to be honest with you, and, and for the town that, that the um, drinking water has stayed the same or gone down, so.
Yeah, drinking, everybody, everybody's wells are fine.
Yeah.
Which is, which is the, the really good news.
Yeah, best case scenario right there.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, I mean, it's, he, he, these tests are incredibly sensitive, so to have a little bit of detection here and there, you know, it's there. It's not like it's totally free of it.
Right.
But the con, I mean, the standard's really low to begin with and the fact that we're, you know, we're, we're, the highest concentration we had was eleven point three, which is half the standard, you know, so we're. I think we make a pretty strong argument for we'll be on top of this. We'll make sure it doesn't for some anomalous condition increase. But to me, you know, in my opinion, that's the best approach. It's gonna be way more cost effective to just do the sampling once a year than, you know, some huge, huge. Remediation effort.
Yeah.
Perfect.
And if one of the wells comes back hot in three years, we install a filter, you know?
Yeah, all right.
That sounds, that sounds like a plan to me.
Good stuff. Okay, well, I will, I'll shoot this your way, Tom, and if anybody has questions, you know where to find me. Um, I'll, I'll probably be submitting the draft work plan to you all and Sean Donovan of DEC uh, by end of day tomorrow or latest Monday morning.
Oh, that's fun.
Probably Monday, cause I'm gonna, I wanna incorporate your suggestions, Tom, with that location, so.
This, this sounds, it's really probably not where's the mark right now, or probably not gonna be able to fly. Cause it is an act of, it is an act of uh, core operation.
Okay, that, we would propose that these wells have stickups, so they'd be a three or four foot stickup, so it wouldn't, you know, it wouldn't get buried, but. There's more risk of it, uh, you know, it would be a metal protector. It'll be.
Uh, the thing is, the, the two parallel buildings, the big, the largest one on, on the eastern side, that's a garage and the, the part up towards the north. Before they store the trucks, they park the stuff in there. The one that's parallel to that is a salt shed. And they drive in from the back on that one. The other one, or actually, that's a sand shed. The one is uh, kind of perpendicular to them right there on the south side. That is the, uh, that's a salt shed. So, if they could even put something in close to the salt shed, it wouldn't be moving it that far. You know, because they, assuming they drive, they drive the trucks around there and so forth. If we could keep it out of the way there, then they won't, they won't head it. They'd be a good, good spot for it and you're only moving, you know, less than a hundred feet. You know, that might, that would be.
I, I like that idea. It's sort of a natural, being close to the building like that, there's a bit of natural protection.
Oh, yeah, yeah, nobody's ever gonna smash into it. Let's hope.
We'll make sure you and Steve get together the day of when we actually put them in the, in the ground, but uh. I'll, I'll send this, this figure to you and, and you let me know where you think it would work.
Okay, yeah, I'll, I'll write a blue report with Joel tomorrow.
Great.
All right.
All right. Um, anything else you need from me tonight?
I don't have anything for you, Kurt, really.
Anybody have any questions for Kurt? I'm, I'm good.
I don't.
Good, thank you.
Nice job of that.
Thank you, Kurt.
Thank you, sir, very much.
Have a good one.
Thanks.
All right. I didn't realize you was, you were having this.
That's good, though. That's good.
It's all done. We're good.
We're good. Thank you, Tom.
Um.
Thank you, Tom.
Animal control, dog kennel and dog.
Forget your mouse.
Was Leonard, that's not mine, that was your.
No, the mouse? Isn't that your mouse?
Oh, yeah, it is. Was Leonard coming in? Does anybody know?
I thought he was.
I thought he was. Yeah.
I thought he told me he's gonna watch on Zoom.
Oh, is he coming? Maybe he's out on Zoom then.
That was gonna say.
Yeah.
Kids don't wanna watch the discussion about your project.
The census for sure.
Um, when's our next meeting? It's after the first of April, right? Yes.
Yeah.
Let's move the dog kennel to the seventh and have Leonard come in. Um, we can do the dog census at time.
So, basically Leonard was asking, um, let me double check my notes here, but. Um.
Night, Tom.
Night, Tom. It's twenty twenty-two, dog census does need to be done, but he's trying to determine what's the most cost effective way to go about it. He wanted to ask you your opinion on that. He was thinking either doing a mailer to everyone or go door to door. Either way, he said he was fine with.
Well, we talked about that.
Going to door to door is an awful lot of work.
Yeah.
It's, when, when I spoke to the state about what a dog census was, they said that that's, it's not a door to door thing, that it's usually a survey of some kind.
Kind of mail.
So, if you're doing mailer, I know he's doing the free or the, the clinic.
That's this weekend, I think.
Yeah, coming week. I can't remember if it was this weekend or first weekend of April, but, and so hopefully he'll get a lot of answers for. And so hopefully he'll get a lot of answers for that, that way.
Well, people who are coming into the clinic are getting their tags. So that's not what, right, but.
Yeah, but that's.
Get it from dog registration?
Yeah, you, you'll get part of that from the dog registration and then.
The state said people that the census is not door to door. It doesn't, it's not like the national census.
Right.
That it's, it's usually a survey of some kind. But the postcard mailer.
I was gonna say.
I think we should get a.
Postcard.
I think we should get a cost on a postcard mailer. See, let's see what that general cost is gonna be. And then we can make a decision on what we want to do.
So could we have that by our next meeting?
Right, April seventh, we can have a cost, sure. I don't, I don't want to just willy nilly this without having a cost on.
Right, absolutely.
So, let's get a, let's get a cost on what a postcard mailer is gonna be to, you know, with a, I guess we'd have to, um, well, we could figure out how, how they would respond, you know, they would, you know, whether they respond back to the website.
At either email or to dog kennel or, or animal control officer, excuse me.
Probably, probably the best, probably the best thing. And, and I don't know, I'm asking you to this because I'm not the IT guy, obviously. Could we set up, if we sent a mailer, a postcard mailer, could we set up on our website a response that I could send back? And I have two dogs.
Yes.
Okay, without, it's pretty.
Yeah.
Okay. And, and that may be our least expensive way out. I mean, because, because the person who's gonna respond is gonna respond whether it's going to our website and responding or if we send a self addressed stand envelope, they're, they're gonna respond no matter what, if you ask me. So, okay, perfect. We'll post, let's put the dog kennel on the seventh, have Leonard come in. Um, give us an update on that.
And if you'd like, I'm gonna offer, since we're talking project management, I'm rolling in. We've got a dragon. I have a little thing to see. Um, I'm happy to meet with him before.
Yeah.
Kind of, and, and to talk about the project in general, what some needs are and talk about some products and possibility of project management.
I think that's a great idea.
I do too.
All right.
Thank you, Rebecca.
No, and I don't think I added that to the agenda, to be honest with you.
I'll take your public comment. It's just an announcement.
It's been bugging me that I forgot to add that. Sorry. So I figured that. Historic Preservation Commission. That's you, Megan?
So, um, I'm not sure if you're able to read the email I sent. Um, this is the draft of an ordinance for Historic Preservation. And of course, as we all know, town has an extensive history. And it'd be great to start working on preserving it. If we created a commission, we would also be able to become a CLG, which is a certified local government. And it puts us in a pool to qualify for a lot more grants. And, you know, not all of them are mashing ones. It would cover the costs of historic preservation, which would be great. But in order to start a draft of the ordinance to be able to present to you all, I was hoping to be able to form the commission so that we, we, uh, the people that are interested will be able to meet and review that together.
To see if there's enough interest for commissions, what you're asking.
Right, there definitely is an interest, but, um, there hasn't been an announcement asking for letters of interest or anything like that yet, since it's not, it hasn't been created, so.
Now, this all stems from the Pownell Cemetery Association?
Um, it does not.
That was my question from the email.
Um, that's actually a, um, a new thing that came up. I've been actually trying to put this together for the past six months. So we could hopefully get into that pool for more, um, grant money.
Okay.
Um, the Pownell Cemetery Association just emailed this week. And it was the president, Deanna Beasley, she wants to meet on Saturday, which we scheduled for ten AM. Um, to talk about their association, because it turns out that they don't have any members. Um, right now they have three, but their treasurer is about to leave town. And so they have the president and vice president, and they don't see anyone jumping up to help. So they were hoping that the town would be able to figure out a way to take over. And that means.
They want to schedule it for this Saturday? Is that what our email, I didn't?
Yeah. Yeah, I'm gonna meet up with her.
Oh, you're gonna meet up with her?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, and then just get an overview of exactly what is, you know, going on with their association. That way it could.
What's entailed and.
Right.
Yeah.
I have a better, better idea for, for you all at, at that point.
I think, I think we can, we can send out some feelers probably for a Historic Preservation Commission.
Put something on the web.
Yeah, I, I don't have a problem with that. I think, I think one thing that we really need to be careful of right now, as a board, is, is I think we got a couple of projects that we should clean up before we jump, jump into another project. You know, I think this is a great idea and, and I'm a huge history buff myself. And I, and I totally support it. But I think we got some projects that, you know, we gotta put a schoolhouse on the end of this.
Right.
You know, we gotta finish Blacktop. We gotta, you know, we got some stuff that really, the dog kennel, you know, I mean, working on this is one thing, but we got a lot of, we got a lot of projects to clean up in the next few months. So I think this is something that maybe, maybe we go ahead and attack, which, which you could do some stuff, because you're gonna need to do some, get some stuff up feelers out there anyways. But we could bring this back on, you know, June or July, the next fiscal year, and then go, and then go from there. Is that?
Yeah, that sounds good.
Now, Kurt, is this already, is there a statute that covers this already? Have you looked in it? Okay.
Yeah, that's included in that sample ordinance.
Okay.
I saw that, yeah.
I didn't get to read the whole thing. I thought, I, I just wanted to.
You know, I, I, I think there's a lot of projects that we as a board.
They're involved.
I, I'd rather, I, we need to concentrate, you know, this year with me being the chair, I want to concentrate on getting some stuff cleaned up.
Finished up, yeah.
Finished up, you know, we have a great start and we, and we have, we, we really do when there's, you know, we have a start on this, obviously. But I want to get some of this other stuff.
And the other thing that we're gonna have to make sure like we did with Parks and Rec as far as Historic Society with this Historic Commission. Because sometimes people try to get intertwined and get convoluted. That's, so that's something else that we're gonna have to put some thought in when we're doing that.
I, I think putting some feelers out on our website is, is a good idea and seeing if we can get some interest. And I mean, I think you could probably even start having some meetings, get, you know, get going a little bit, you know? Whatever night works, Monday nights. I don't think there's anybody ever in the building here, you know? I, I think that's totally fine.
Okay, great.
But like I said, I think, I think we got, we got some projects we gotta get cleaned up. We got, you know, we got the Lister agent that we gotta work on, you know, there's, there's, there's some stuff we got. Yeah, we got, that's my opinion as, as the, you know, as a board member and the board chair now that I, I want to clean up some of these projects we have that we're working on. Then we can attack some more. I'm fine with that.
I agree.
Sounds good.
A part of moving us forward.
Is that, you good with that?
Yeah, absolutely. I'll put it on the website and Facebook and all the places.
Perfect. Which brings us to board appointments to the Planning Commission and Development Review Board. Uh, those, those positions have been posted for a while, or those openings for quite a while, if I'm not mistaken.
Some of them for well over a year.
Yeah, right. So we have, for the Planning Commission, we'll start with that one, because that's the first one, that's the one that was on top. Uh, we have an application or an email from John Bushy asking to be reappointed um, to the Planning Commission. John's been a member for, I, I, a while on, on the Planning Commission. So, what's your pleasure?
How many open spots do we have versus how many applicants do we have? Would be my first question.
So I'm glad you brought that up, because I think there's three open spots on the Planning Commission right now, I believe. John's comes up this year.
Yeah.
And I think there's two vacancies. Okay, I'm not positive of that. And if I had a town board, obviously they'd have it in front of me. My, my, this is my concern about the Planning Commission. Because we only had one applicant, and we've discussed this before. I think.
About dropping the number?
Exactly. I think we should drop, I think the number right now is nine on the Planning Commission. And aren't you on the Planning Commission?
I am.
So you gotta come off.
No, I don't.
Well, you're not a voting member on the select board.
I've been informed that there's actually no state statute against it.
Really?
Okay, and traditionally Ronnie was voting right along.
I don't know if he was voting, but maybe, whatever, whatever. I, I think we should drop the number from nine at least down to seven, in my opinion, because it's seven, you only need four for a quorum. And nine, you need five. It's, it's really, I think.
There has been a few times where we've managed to pull four, but still can't have a meeting.
Exactly.
And that's what you guys were saying, and that's why we were discussing.
John, John is the acting chairman of the, of the Planning Commissioner now, and he's brought that to our attention in the past. And I think now is the time to do it, uh, because we only get, you know, here it is.
Yeah, I, I'm in agreement with that. It'd be different if we had, like, like I was asking, how many applied? If we had. We had like seven people applying for three positions, I'd say it's not a good idea to drop the size.
No, I, I totally agree.
That's why we, at the time, we had quite a few applicants, and that's why we left it at nine at the time.
Yeah.
And then, uh.
So we can do it in two phases. I'll entertain a motion to appoint John Bushy back onto the Planning Commission.
So moved.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Now I'll entertain a motion to drop the number of participants on the Planning Commission from nine to seven.
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Any discussion?
There's nothing against state statute or anything on that, right?
No, we can say that.
It was increased to nine, actually.
Okay, from seven to nine. Okay, just making sure we're all good.
Any more discussion? Any questions? All those in favor?
Hi.
Perfect. So carried.
DRB.
Developmental Review Board. There's two applicants for Developmental Review Board. Uh, Olden Dwyer sent one in. Um, my name is Olden Dwyer. I'm very interested in being a part of the DRB, Pownell, I love our town, want to be a part of it, staying at Best Place uh, North to Live. Thank you and hope to hear from you soon. Olden Dwyer.
So moved.
Any discussion or questions?
Uh, same question I had before. How many open positions?
There's, there is, um, there's Cindy, Cindy Legg is one, David Dentz is one. And then there was an open position, so I believe there's three.
Okay.
So I, we didn't, we did not receive anything from Cindy. I know she had expressed an interest in this in the past, but I know there's three.
Okay.
So we're good, we're good with two.
Okay.
But I know there's two, because David Dentz's term is up and Cindy Legg's term is up. So I know there's at least two, Brian, I think there's three though.
Okay. I'm surprised Dave didn't put in for it again.
He surprised either one of them.
Yeah, Cindy surprised me. But anyway, uh, Olden Dwyer, uh, we have a motion on the floor in a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Hi.
Hi. So carried. Uh, we have another applicant for the DRB, and I will abstain from this one. Good afternoon, I am drafting this email. It's from Cody Gardner, sorry. Good afternoon, I am drafting this email in order to express my interest in the open position on the town of Pownell's DRB. I have lived in Pownell for nearly all of my life, and in fact, now own nine and a half acres on Sweet Road, currently building a home. I'm interested in this position because I believe it offers me an opportunity to impact the town in a positive manner. Deep down, I believe that Pownell is a diamond in the rough, and with a few small tweaks, we can bring out some of the hidden potential in our town. With that being said, I also appreciate the rich heritage and pride of our community, the families who have been here for many years. There's a fine line between change and tradition, and I would like to excel with social matters. Whoops, sorry. I would like to help draw this line in the sand. I am a business minded person, but also like to believe that I excel with social matters. Please consider me for this position and please allow me to help move the town of Pownell in a positive direction that incorporates both change and tradition. Thank you, Cody Gardner.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion or questions? All those in favor?
Hi.
Abstain. So carried. Brings us to select board topic assignments.
Yeah.
Too quickly, you guys all reviewed the list, I said.
And then it's an extensive list.
Rolling in.
Here, let me.
Can I use this pencil?
Oh, yeah, sure. Just don't break my leg.
So I sent you, it's one of my many party gifts for you. The suggestion that I had was for you to, um, every select board member be in charge of just knowing about more deeply a, a collection of subjects regarding the work we do here in Pownell. This is not about you doing the work. This is not about you supervising the work. This is not about you directing how it's to be done. This is just about you being involved with the people who actually do this work and really understanding it. They have some new process that they're going through, go understand, ask some questions, understand that process. So that way, every time you guys are at a meeting, there is someone at this table who has like that more in-depth understanding of that aspect of town work. I think this will really like bump up select board work a level, instead of everyone trying to keep track of all the things, but never really the whole thing of anything. So I made this list, and I'm hoping you guys kind of had a sense, and I was hoping we could just go through it. I'll say what it is, and you call it. I'm gonna put your name next to it, and we're gonna use this when we do our work plan with the VLCT person as well, because we're gonna create an organizational chart so that we will identify which select board member kind of takes that primary place in each of these subjects. Do you, if, if you guys are game, we started talking about this a couple of weeks ago. I'm hoping we can just make short shift of it.
I, I think that's a great idea, and I think we should go through this. And I think some of them are gonna be pretty easy.
Yes.
For people to jump into. Some of them may not be so easy. So we may not complete it.
Well, let's go through, and then we can put some to the side and talk about them later. And then Bob can get the dregs, because he's not here.
That was mine.
Then I nominated Bob to take.
I also have a good, I, I know Bob pretty well. I have a good sense of things that I think he would be good at, by the way, so.
I was gonna say that, so.
For instance, um, I do think Bob would be good at RFPs, top of the list.
I agree.
So I'm gonna put Bob there. Grant applications and grant closeouts. I think he'd be good at that, Angie. Is this my job? Am I gonna assign it?
If looks could swear.
Well, I, I, yes, I, I think Angie'd be there, but I, so before we even go any further, if somebody doesn't want something that we suggest, or, or if we have something that's jumps into, okay, so we down through and.
Yeah, we'll figure it out later.
Down through the list. But I also think that, listen, let's jump in here, because, because this is a project that Rebecca and I talked about, and then she took the bull by the horns and went through this. This is something before the election I had brought up. This is something I think would streamline the select board. Not just because I'm the board chair, I would have brought this up if I was just sitting over there as, as not the board chair or even vice chair. I just think that in a, on a, on an everyday, every meeting basis, if we're talking about a grant, Angie can talk about the grants. If we're talking about daily office management, whoever has that can talk about that. Because that's, that's what you, as a, as a select board member, that's your kind of.
It gives, it gives the staff and officials an opportunity to, if they need support or an extra phone call somewhere, or you know, it gives a point person for these things as well. So Angie, can I give you grants? You don't have.
I was gonna volunteer.
So the next one was.
Management, but that's okay.
Or you can do that too.
Angie, you want that too?
No, I think that's good. Well, there's a bunch of them here, and there's only five of us guys.
Right, everyone needs to take five, call it. And Bob, because he's always busy, gets four. So we can give him the worst four.
I'll take Parks and Rec and Plan, Planning Commission.
Because you're there already, right? Perfect. Ryan and Ryan. Yeah, and I, I like you for daily office management, because you get off of work at that time, you're able to stop in and see how everyone's doing. Highway? Um, yeah, and I, I like you for daily office management cuz you get off of work at that time. You're able to stop in and see how everyone's doing. Highway.
I think that should be Mike.
I, I've been, I, I've been, I've been working with Joel and Darcy.
Right, let's put you there.
But I also think, I also think that on the highway and the wastewater. That we should have a second choice, because if, if there's a problem. And, and I think Jamie would be good because he's worked with them in the past pretty extensively. If they can't get ahold of me and they need something.
Yep.
For whatever, so.
Well, they're still gonna be using like Megan and Tara as their point persons for all the work. This is just for you guys to take the time to know what they're doing.
But if there's kind of an emergency and you gotta have a select board member and whatever to do something, I, you know, I think, I think those two are fairly critical to have.
Yep.
Two people.
So you're gonna do the wastewater too?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Because I've been working with, yeah.
Then are we authorizing these individuals to make emergency decision making?
Well.
No, no, this is not emergency. This, this is just knowledge. This is just knowledge, because honestly.
Well, I started to misunderstand the way.
I know, I know what you're, I know, I know what you're saying.
I would just say too is that we've really like.
Yeah.
Like things, like things have, things have, uh, calmed quite down quite a bit. So there's not as much emergency decision making needed lately. Okay, so, right, it's okay, Brian. I know you're still. So website, social media. Um, Bob?
Yeah, I think Bob would be good there.
Cuz you can do that remotely. DRB?
Yeah, I'll take DRB.
Yep.
Cuz there's zoning, I'm already going.
Well, I think someone else should have zoning as well, because just so, you know what I mean?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. But I mean, I, I, as the zoning administrator, I go to the DRB anyway.
Um, I think Bob should have policies. Ordinances. I mean, that could be Bob too. It could be policies and ordinances, cuz we really don't have very many ordinances. Like, that's very rare.
So that's Bob's four.
I would say that's Bob's four. Okay. Or no?
No, I can, I can work with Bob on that, if you wanted to as well.
For ordinances?
I'm not.
Bob and Mike or just Mike?
No, I think, I think leave Bob there. I think Bob's pretty good. Bob and I bounce off each other.
He's very good with ordinances and policies.
And when we, and when, when Bob's, Bob's working on ordinance, I'm working on an ordinance, we bounce off each other really well.
Yep, that, that's absolutely true. Um, Angie, I like you on the next one, honestly. Connection with the town clerk's office?
I was just gonna volunteer.
Okay. Um, town hall maintenance, Jamie? Same with that. Easy peasy. Um, IT.
That's not me.
Brian?
Uh, sure.
I mean, or Bob. Bob has a lot of IT understanding.
I was gonna say, let's just give that to Bob, cuz Bob, I, I think Bob understands that better than.
Alright.
The rest of us for sure.
Health officer.
I can do that one.
Okay.
I work with Fred, so I can talk about it every day with him anyway.
Oh, perfect. Um, I think someone, even though we have our zoning officer, someone should also under, know what's going on with zoning. Which just means you know when the applications come in and, yep, Jamie? Okay. Um, animal control.
I guess I can tackle that one.
You want that one? Okay.
Either or, I mean, I.
Okay.
Why don't we put Jamie on there if he wants to be in there too? I don't wanna.
Yep, Brian and Jamie, great.
Perfect.
I've gone out.
Yeah, right, right.
Um, Lister, the Lister department and the new, we're gonna have, um, you know, the new assessing and listing, uh, system. So who would like to take that?
I'm a JP as well.
Perfect.
I can try to dabble and do what I can do.
Um, we need someone to liaison with the Pownell Historical Society once they get into the building.
I can try to do that.
Okay.
I'll do the transfer station.
Okay, Jamie? Um, press. I'm giving you.
It's only natural the chair take on the press.
Yeah. Um, trainings, Angie? I think you'd be good at that. Angie's good at all the community, the, the office people. Um, and then. Guys, all of you should be on this, but, but town report. I, one of you should say, okay, I'm gonna take town report. I'm gonna follow the calendar, help make sure they've got it set up, all of that. Um, and know it now. And, but all of you should do it, and I mean, I'm gonna recommend a really meticulous process when we get to that. Well, when you guys get to that, but, um, I think one of you should just be thinking about it.
You're killing me, Sal.
Angie?
English was not my.
I'm putting, because that's office staff too, so I think it goes with that, right?
Alright, you guys, I think I have one as well.
Yeah, but I wanna, I wanna jump in there with you.
Okay.
Okay, I, I don't wanna. Because the town report, the town report has been such a contentious thing.
Yes.
Excuse me for the last couple of years.
Yep.
I, I'm jumping in there with you. We can do that together. That won't be one or the other.
Yeah, and you're not.
Cause we're not doing it.
I know that, but I know, no, I understand that. We will, we will, we will.
Make sure.
We need that together, okay? Because, because I, I seriously think that's more than a one-person job, and I, and I think. I wanna make, I wanna make it, I wanna make it.
Four.
Bob's got four. So what I'm gonna do is I'm going to amend this document so it has your names next to it. And we will use that as part of our organizational chart, and also we will put it on the website. Okay, so that, alright, am I for the next one? What's, and that's it. Thank you. You guys did that very well. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Oh, on town hall, yes, that's me too.
Town Hall's up.
So, um, there, I received an email from a, um. From the VLCT, I mean, it was sent to everyone. It wasn't addressed to me personally. Um, but there has been, uh, a movement in Vermont where these are citizens, these are private citizens, um, activists. Going into public spaces like town halls and post offices, doing what they're calling a First Amendment audit. And what they're doing is they're testing to make sure that they're allowed to do things like film in public spaces. And they are allowed to film in public spaces. Um, and, but people get offended by that often, and they say, stop filming me, stop filming me, you know? Um, and so they, they're talking about how really towns really need to, so this is. Need to delineate the places in their town hall that are private versus public. I believe that you should be getting some private signs, like private do not enter, not for public entry, or what, however you wanna say it. Um, to put on office doors, because in offices behind doors. There are confidential records. People are working on a computer screen that has confidential information on them. So also, that's just for safety as well, to not have the public coming in. We're used to that one-room town hall. The public can't be coming in and just opening up our office doors and coming in, and we've already seen a bit of that happening. That's separate from the town, the, these First Amendment audits. If someone does come here and they wanna film in the public space, you politely let them film.
Can we post a sign stating that, uh, no entry to office without invite? Would that cover that rather than having?
Uh, well, I don't think you wanna have an appointment only town hall. That's not good for, for civic business, in my opinion.
Yeah, that, that's, if, if you are coming in and you make, you know, I'm not just gonna walk into your door, into your office. I'm gonna knock on the door.
No, but they should be able to walk in the front door of the town hall without an invite. I mean, we're talking the offices.
Not talking about the town hall. I'm talking about the, if you put it.
On the office doors?
It'd be on the wall saying.
Private, not for public entry. You don't need to say, need an invitation. It's not like a vampire law, you know?
I'm just.
You just, right, I would say private, not for public entry. And then obviously, if someone wants to invite someone into their office, they're welcome to invite someone. It's, hey, come here, sit down. But I think that you need to decide where does the public end? Because it's, and I think that it should end at that little entry area right there. You know, and then obviously, when there's a meeting, this opens up, the public can come in here. And then, but meetings are eventually gonna be in the schoolhouse, which is even better. Then all of this will be private space. Um, so I would say, no, you can even put a little sign maybe on a pedestal right there, no public beyond this point. That might solve that altogether. Um, but you want to do that. And another interesting note that was in this Second Amendment audit email was a reminder that. FOIA's public record requests, they do not need to identify themselves. If you get a public record request, you send the records. So it's about public access and citizen access, and we want them to have that access. If somebody comes in here filming. We let them film, we're polite, we smile, and, but the advice is to clearly delineate. Where the public is allowed and where they're not allowed. So maybe a standing sign that says no public beyond that point. That would solve all those, all of those issues.
Right.
So that's town hall of signage for private spaces.
Okay.
So if you wanna make a decision on that, beyond that, I have nothing else for town hall. That was it.
Yep, I have that listed.
Okay, so I'm all done now.
Do we wanna discuss? Do we wanna discuss that signage tonight, or?
I don't think it would be a bad idea.
No.
Or do, yeah.
Well, I know Rebecca didn't mention it, but further in that email, she had mentioned about. Doors in offices with windows, about maybe putting coverings up so that you can't film. If somebody has confidential paperwork on their desk, being able to see it through a window.
Well, no, I don't, I don't, I think, uh, cuz I would feel very bad for Tara in that situation. She would be in a dungeon. Um, so, but what I would say is that if you don't allow people beyond. That spot, you're not hitting any of the offices. I mean, the town clerk's office is always open. That's town.
Right.
That's a different situation than the rest of us working on, for legal.
Right.
I can't have people looking at what I'm doing if I'm here working. So, you know, I don't think that window covering, but I do think that right there, before Ellen's door. A little stand-up sign, no public beyond this point is probably, um, what I'm thinking. And maybe a small private sign on each of the doors in case someone walks right past the other thing.
Right.
And the Lister's office will need one.
I make a motion that we, um. Get small private signs to put on all of the offices and one sign in the foyer, not to go past that point. And I think we can ask Joel to order it, can't we?
I think we can get those on.
These are street signs. I think that probably there's something we can get on.
I'm sure we can get them someplace, well.
Okay.
Without a lot of trouble, Tara and Megan.
She probably gets something ready to staples.
Right, that's what I'm saying, yeah.
Yeah.
Have a motion on the floor?
Second.
Any discussion or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Town Hall. Again, obviously, we're here. First select board meeting in here. Um, this will not be the permanent location. Once we get to school, I'll just move in there, but, uh, right now, it's working pretty good. Really good. Um, we're looking for some map hangers for Julie's maps. To make things a little more streamlined, easier for, um, people coming in or anybody that's working with the maps. Right now, they're kind of a mess. That's kinda Julie's idea. I was looking for the. Numbers in here. Megan and I didn't see them in our packet that Julie gave us. Do you remember the cost?
Yes.
I'm sorry, I, I, I have it and I'm just. I can't find it.
I probably have it on my email.
I have it. I have it in, I printed out the packet, um, except for the.
There we go.
EHP seven hundred sheets. I didn't print that one.
You wanna take a look at it?
Yes, perfect, thank you. I, I knew I had it, though. And it's probably in here somewhere. I can't. I thought so. I just can't find it right now. It's irritating me, okay?
There it is.
Yeah, there you go, see? That's what I've been searching for. Um, so this was, there is a, is an estimate quote from Easy File. This is what Julie and, um. I, I think Megan worked with her. I'm not sure. Whatever, doesn't matter. Julie, this, this is what she's looking for. As you see, that whole list there. It's thirty-seven hundred and nineteen dollars and eight cents.
Rebecca, didn't we get some head of grant or something for that a while back? Or we?
For what?
Map hanging?
No, not map hanging.
No, it was for visualization. Okay, alright. I didn't know if that was part of that.
No, I believe these are for the, for like a mylar map. That Julie has when somebody does a subdivision and all that kinda stuff, which there is a significant number of those here.
Yes.
Okay, I believe that's what they're for. So it's three thousand seven hundred and nineteen dollars and eight cents.
I make a motion that we purchase it for her.
Second.
No, it's for the town.
Well, it's for the town, but for, for Julie.
It's fine. No, it's fine.
Have an easy.
She's not gonna take them unless she leaves.
No, it's not.
Did I get a second?
Yes.
Any more discussion or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Alright, so carried. I think that's it, all I have on the town hall.
There's also the, um, electrical quotes, one for the generator and one for the, um, light posts.
Oh, yeah, and the alarm system.
So, do we have any kind of solar? Are they all electrical lights? We have no solar lights for the parking lot or any?
No. I think we discussed it, but it's gonna be more upfront costs, so. We shied away from that, but we kinda left the door open that, if, that something could add on later on.
So the alarms, the alarm system for the building from alarms unlimited, that's what we have now, correct, Jamie? His quote is labor and materials is eleven hundred dollars with an annual monitoring fee of two hundred and eighty-eight dollars. The system is expandable to add the old schoolhouse and the historical society. It's two touchpads, one upstairs, one downstairs. Um, three motion detectors on the main floor.
One downstairs in the basement, correct?
Uh, yep.
Plus the doors.
Plus the doors.
Plus the doors, yep. What's your pleasure?
Motion that we accept a bid.
You hear a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So the generator.
I see that includes the groundwork, but it was everything else.
Well, I'm gonna hold off on the generator. Um, I have an appointment tomorrow morning to, um, go look at a generator, actually. Joel and I have an appointment tomorrow at nine. So I'm gonna hold off on the generator until, um, the seventh. The generator that we're looking at is, is, um. I, I can have it tomorrow if we wanted, so, um, it won't hurt us on that thirty-day stuff, really. So I'd like to hold off on the, on the generator for tonight, and. The outside lights, we can move on that if you guys so choose. Everybody has the quote. Quote to perform the electrical work to above address, install three pole lights for parking lot, run the conduit, pull the wire and make the connections. Includes all materials and labor for a complete job. Pole lights include three fifty-watt LED heads. Fifteen-foot pole, anchor kit, base, cover kit and cap. Does not include the excavating or backfill, and does not include the concrete base for the poles. It's eighty-five hundred dollars. It's from Kelson Electric, who has done all of our electric in the building now. What's your pleasure?
If we go, that we need to coordinate somebody to do the concrete base and excavating them.
And that should be done.
He didn't recommend anybody that he's worked with that. To offer a quote on that part.
Uh, to be perfectly honest with Jamie, I've not talked to Stan with this, about this at all. This is what Eric got from me, so I, I don't know. I, I would imagine that anybody can do the excavation, to be honest with you. I'm sure there's a, a speck on the concrete base, you know, SPX number a feet deep, whatever it is, that, you know? Um, it sounds like he's providing all the conduit.
Yep.
But it sounds like we have to, would have to do the, the excavation. Now, this should be done, obviously, before the blacktop goes in. Um, I also think that we should do this before the landscaping, um, gets started. We'll bring up next month, we'll bring that up first, first meeting in April. I didn't wanna go too crazy here tonight. I know we had a lot of other stuff on here. So.
Motion to take, accept his bid.
Okay.
Unless we didn't reach out for anybody else. I mean, I know Sam's been doing everything else for onsite so far, so.
I would bet we'd have a hard time beating his price, from what I've seen.
Second.
Any more discussion, questions? All those in favor of Kelson Electric doing the, uh, three lights outside?
Aye.
Aye, aye. So carried. Generator will put on, um, April seventh, please.
Okay.
Alright, let me see where we're at here.
The most thing for town halls, um, uh, getting a post for mailbox out front.
That's right.
Do we need, what, you want a official? Do we need, what, you want a official mailbox? Or do you want a, as far as for the post office? Okay, that's what I was. Have to take and fill out a whole thing for that.
Well, so here's, here's what's going on now. Right now, we have a post office box. We can have the mail picked up and delivered right here at the town office with a lockable post office box.
So we get one on the side of pedestal with a key and.
It's just like what we have over at the old building. Too bad we couldn't move it.
So um, we can, we can get that and we have a proposal. Um, right, you have numbers for that? So the first thing that we have to do is we have to decide to do away with our post office box, which personally they deliver the mail and they pick up mail for free. Now, it's not free. So, um, whatever it is. Whatever it is. If it's five dollars a month, I don't care.
The town money overall.
Town money.
Somebody to travel across town to go do it.
And the, and the post office picks up and delivers right here. And I don't think it's gonna matter one bit as far as mail delivery goes. Whether we get it down there or get it here. The mail's, the mail's the mail right now and we all know that. So first, first I'd like to entertain a motion that we do away with our post office box when our contract is up. Change our mailing address to five eleven Center Street.
Fill out the forwarding information with the post office, because it's gonna be a while for us to make sure all our points of contact are updated with everything.
That's right.
Later ahead also.
Yep, all that's gonna have to get changed.
So that's, I, you know, I'd like to do away with the post office box.
I make a motion that we do away with the post office box when our um, contract is up.
I don't know if it's a monthly contract or yearly, I don't. Any more discussion? All those in favor? Which brings us to our next, the outside post office box. So there was a couple of different, you go ahead, you know, you, you have that.
Yes, I um, emailed three links to ones through Home Depot, since we have a commercial account with them. It seemed to be the most cost efficient. One is directly on the building, but the other two were on a post. And there was uh, two different sizes, a medium and a large one.
If we had it directly on the building, the person would have to get out of their vehicle, which would probably not be a good thing. That's exactly right. So you have to have one on the pole.
No, I, I don't disagree with that. I don't disagree with having one on a pole.
I think it'd be safer to have it on the building, but not for the post person.
What was the cost difference?
Um, the cost difference between the ones on the posts were around twenty dollars difference. It wasn't by much.
It's not class.
And they lock.
And they lock.
What was the cost? It has to lock.
Um, I could pull it up for sure. One, I believe was ninety-eight, the other one was seventy-eight.
Right, they were, that's why I just.
Did that include the pole?
No.
So you have to buy the pole separately?
Hole and I dig the hole and all that.
The post office, separate lock that they come in and sell.
Yeah, it's all.
We're really talking under five hundred dollars here, I think, for the whole entire project, so.
Want to make sure we got the right animal, that's all. But I make a motion that we uh, purchase the box and pull.
Who should we ask there?
To do the process?
That's one motion. I got a second one.
Alright, did you make the motion?
Yes.
To purchase a post, the pedestal type postal box.
I'll suck it.
Any more discussion or questions? All those in favor?
Second motion is to do a propos- uh, do a proposal.
An RFP.
Yes, thank you. RFP for the excavating for, to include the postal box as well as the lighting and generator work.
Combine it all in one.
I just think it'd be as.
It's all excavating and concrete work.
Good idea. Good idea.
Are there any other projects that we can think of that are gonna require that kind of work?
I'm glad you brought that up, Brian, because Joel and I were out here the other day talking about some different things. We were talking about some blacktop work and, and, and a lot of things. So, on the upper road by the carriage barn, he's gonna put that in to have it blacktopped. So when we were here talking the other day, I would really like to put a, a set of landscape steps down that bank. Because if we are voting or doing something here and we use that upper lot or upper area completely totally for some parking, instead of coming all the way around the road or down that bank where somebody's gonna slip and fall, we have a set of stairs.
Gonna have to railing too then.
We'll have to go through the whole thing, that's right, Jamie. You have to have a railing. But Joel and I were talking about it. I'd like to have, I'd like to have a set of steps that come down. You know, kind of off the front of the building, off that front door, right down off that upper carriage barn area. So I would think we can incorporate that all on the same.
RFP.
RFP. And that, that needs to be done before the landscaping.
And we could do something like if they have it at the Legion where it's made out of railroad ties, even.
We could, we could do whatever. If somebody wanted to come in here and give us a really good price on the concrete set of steps or, or railroad ties or, or whatever. You know, I mean, we'd have to draw up that RFP.
Blacktop's going up big time this year, I heard per ton, so.
It's not crazy. Joel's already, he's working on that bid right now. That's just, just the thought that we had the other day was putting a set of steps in there. Perfect. So we'll set that up. I'll, I'll work on you with that. Work with you on that. There, that's better. My English wasn't very good a couple minutes ago, sorry.
Did um, Sam include a site, a site plan for linear? Okay. Want to reach out to him as far as that. Because that's gonna take and be part, will, will need to be included in the RFP. Uh, the emitter, linear ditching and um, number of posts for the uh, concrete and the whole nine yards.
Alright, we, do you have anything else for town hall? Tara, you have anything? You guys have been in here for a week now. Kind of. We're gaining, we're gaining still. You guys are still working on stuff, but we're gaining.
I see all the files on your floor everyone come in, because you said you finally got to unpack some stuff.
So these are some things that we've been coming up with in the last couple of weeks, just kind of brainstorming back and forth. For some, for some RFPs. Joel, Joel, once again, we were here the other day talking about some things. So the first one, if we want to talk about it, is um, for a building and grounds maintenance person.
They included a draft of the RFP, but there's also one of a job posting. You wanted to go that route?
Right, so let's, let's talk about them a little bit. I don't want to spend a bunch of time on these tonight, because we're not in a bind and we do have a bunch of other stuff on there. Once again, I'm not a table person as well. One of the things that Joel and I talked about the other day, and then he kind of talked, brought it up and moved it forward, obviously. That's our age. Because, because there is a tremendously larger area to plow now, because we have two parking lots. Okay, and we have to have um, our town offices open. You know, when the road crews out, plowing roads. Okay, that's, that's kind of where this started. When we were talking the other day. So obviously, we would provide the vehicle to the, to the, to a building and grounds person to plow. The town can come in in sand or salt or whatever they're gonna do with, you know, we don't need a separate vehicle for that. The road, the town crew can do that. The trash removal, because now we're having trash removal in here. I'm trash removal and we were gonna put the trash removal out to bid anyway. For the Center Street Park, we have the ball field, we have Strobridge Park, we have, you know, several locations now.
Well, currently at the ball field, uh, Palmer Youth Baseball covers trash removal during, during the open season.
Right, so that's fine, but what do we do the rest of the year when?
Has not been a problem.
I know, I know.
But I know, I get what you're saying.
There are several, there are several places that we've talked about, you know, the Strobridge Park, unfortunately is one of those places, it never gets emptied until it's really nasty or whatever.
Yeah, till it's strung all over.
I bought the guy's lunch numerous times.
Right, no, I know what you're saying. So, um, you know, which, which there, you know, so we could do some, you know, minor repairs to the, to the town buildings. Um, if we had a building and grounds person, um, like an on-call handyman type of thing. Landscaping, these are just some bullet points. Um, the other thing that Joel brought up was um, we do have part-time help come in and plow in the winter. This person could plow here and then jump onto a road somewhere where, where Joel would need help in the summertime. Um, if you needed help cleaning up um, um, Sanders, paint, repaint Sanders, you know, we, we could keep a person pretty busy.
So is the thought then making this an extended position of the road crew then?
This is, this is, this is the first we've talked about it. This is the first food for thought, really, Ryan. So we could, we could make it kind of just a building and grounds person that takes care of just a couple of town properties. We could make it an extension of, of the road crew that, that was in here, you know, the, this.
I'm almost thinking it would fit better as part of the road crew with extended building and, like you said, repainting of vehicles and equipment.
Yeah, yeah, you know, there's, I'm, I mean, you know, it's just, there was a conversation that Joel and I had the other day and it's, it's a conversation that spurred this RFP. I think this RFP right here, to me, I hate table one, but I'd like, I'd like to think about that one for, for a couple of weeks. I'd like to bring that back. I'd like to bring that one back on April seventh, just because.
And we want to get something, if we're thinking about incorporating it under Joel's umbrella, we should get some more input from him.
No, exactly, exactly. I just, I think it's time to start this. I think there's enough things. Even if you kept it on a part-time basis and they weren't part of the road crew, you know, there's, there's, I'm sure there's plenty of retired individuals in this town that could use.
Well, I'm just thinking, if you're, if you're thinking getting the person out on the road and plowing with the road crew, I think we would be hard pressed to get somebody in here with a CDL then to drive plow truck.
What, what we're doing now, what we do now, is we do hire um, certain people, townspeople to drive pickups when the town, when Joel needs extra manpower. He hires, he, he, he doesn't hire a CDL qualified driver right now. He hires a person and puts them in.
That can drive the little white truck.
Just to keep the road open while the other guys get their downtime that have the CDLs.
You know, just. Nothing we have to act on tonight. This is, this is, and I don't want to act on this tonight. I, I want to bring this back on the seventh. I want to think about it a little bit myself. But I, I just wanted to bring it out. The next one.
And it is something we started discussing a couple meetings ago.
Let me reach out to Joel and see if I can have one of the guys just grab it. Cause you gotta, you're getting them built up, right?
Well, Eric has like my stuff to take it for us in his trailer, but he's taking that tonight or tomorrow.
Roger didn't say that he would take care of it, but we also do have a lot. I know that the uh, can out there is already filled up. It may have plenty in here too.
How much trash do you think, do you anticipate being generated per week, after weeks, whatever?
Yeah, it's hard to tell. We have so many packing materials and everything around.
Yeah, well, I mean, I, I anticipate the whole unpacking thing is gonna generate more, but what would you normally generate at the other, at the other building?
Um, I could just Julie on this. She said probably one to two bags.
A week?
A week. For the whole, for the whole office, yep.
Well, I'm almost wondering, would it just be easier just to pave Casella to empty like a ninety-six gallon container every couple of weeks?
Yeah, like Tom was saying, they just.
Or All American or put it out for.
Well, we could do, and, and then we had talked about.
I pay, I pay like forty, I pay like forty bucks a month for every other week for ninety-six gallon with a recycling bin.
Yeah, and that's something we can look into. I mean, I'm not on that. I, I, you know, I think there's, I think there's some.
I mean, if Joel can have one of his guys come and run it up to the transfer station with Tom, that's fine.
Or I think even Tom, until we got this position or something finalized, Tom would probably pick it up for us too on his way by if it's bagged up. Uh, next RFP is IT services. I just think that, I think we would be doing due diligence to the town and the taxpayers if we get an idea on, and a proposal for IT services to the whole, you know, for, for the application that we have. And I think it's a pretty good.
Oh, this is what we had discussed at the last meeting up on the hill about getting rid of desktops eventually and getting laptops and more mobile stations. And updating our equipment.
Yeah, I think it's just, I think this is just something that we should, we should do just for due diligence, you know, maybe, maybe.
Doesn't hurt to throw a feeler out.
We're not under a contract now. Okay, so, you know, I just think it's time to, to reach out and see what we can do. I don't think we need to vote on these, do we? Everybody comfortable with sending on an IT RFP? We need, we need one for cleaning this building.
Just double check with Bob with that if he was, just having, in case we overlook something that we might be looking for.
In the IT one?
In the IT thing. Yeah, I saw, I just, I figured he might just, that's his forte.
Send them a little email and say, do you think there's anything to add to the IT before I send it out for. Yes, we did.
Perfect, there's your first job.
Pick his brain, that's all.
And then, and then the next one is the um, RFP for uh, professional cleaning services in, in the new building here. And I know, I know Tara, that was a great bullet point you had about the door handles. That was great, for sure. I'm not sure, that's probably not on a lot of RFPs, but that was a great point. Anybody have any questions about that one? So are we good sending that out?
Absolutely.
Do we want to change the date on that?
Is it to say the dates on there were just thrown out there? I think one of them doesn't even have a date.
The cleaning one has the eighth, we need on the seventh, right? So we wouldn't be able to act on that for a month.
Well, for two weeks, yeah.
So let's, let's change that to the, let's change that to April sixth. Let's change the um, let's change the IT to April sixth. And the buildings and grounds doesn't matter, because we're not gonna act on that one tonight anyways. And let's, honestly, I'll entertain a motion to send out RFPs for cleaning services and IT service for the town. With the RFPs due by April sixth.
So moved.
Any discussion or questions? All those in favor? I just want to make sure we cover our bases. Cover our bases. Which slide just send you executive? Does anybody else have anything on RFPs?
No.
I don't believe so.
Slide just send to executive session.
I'll make a motion for enter executive session for personnel.
Any, it could put the town at a disadvantage. Any, it could put the town at a disadvantage. If we were to do this in open session. Uh, any discussion or questions? All those in favor?
First of all, are we taking action?
Good point, Angie. Question? All those in favor?
Alright, so I'd like to make a motion to pay any eligible employee or official excluding board or commission members. Seventy-five cents per hour from the months of March twenty twenty through February twenty twenty-two for pandemic hazard pay. To be paid from the ARPA funds contingent on the second half payout of the ARPA funds.
Should, should they say per hour worked?
Oh, I thought that's what I said. Yeah, that's, you know, per hour worked during that timeframe.
Second.
Any discussion or questions? All those in favor? Aye. opposed, carried. Uh, public comment. We're just moving.
Couple people out there.
Public comment then, with uh the correspondence stuff, just moving that to the next week.
Yeah.
We can do correspondence.
I was gonna make a public comment because we missed the correspondence. Uh, I wanted to announce that Parks and Rec received fifteen hundred dollars from the Stewart Holiday Matching Grant. Um, the intent of it, although there is a lot of freedom in how you spend that money with Stewart's, um. What we asked for was for refinishing the um.
Times card.
Thank you uh for this, for the stators and all of that, for refinishing it somehow, sealing it and making it smoother, so. Um, and there were a couple other things in there as well, I forget. I forget what off the top of my head, but we got some money.
Yay, thank you.
Is that all you have on correspondence?
That was it.
What, what about, what about your announcement for Monday?
No, waiting.
And uh, this is uh from the highway department. Short note about what's going on. Two proposals from engineers from the Mount Anthony Culver project. East Engineering is by far going to be the cheapest. They've used it for all the projects in the past. That being said, if we would sign this proposal, we can move on with the project. Uh, she'll, she'll have Tara put the full proposal in her packet, which is here. And this didn't, and I should have had this on, but we didn't, so we'll do it under public comment. He's gonna put the gravel crushing out the bid if you agree with the blacktop plan. He'll do the same with that. Um, he'll send these things so we can look them over ahead of time. Sincerely, Joel.
Make a motion that give them our blessing to proceed forward on both of them.
For East Engineering? Second?
Second.
All those in favor? I'll sign that. Uh, now we'll open it to public comment.
Mindy Jo. Hello, this is Mindy Jo. Two things that I'm just confused on that hopefully you can answer. What exactly is a dog census for? And why would we make any part of a taxpayer's building private? Why don't, wouldn't it be better to say if you wanted to see the building and all whatever is. Make arrangements to do so, putting private signs on a building taxpayers pay for. Sounds odd to me, so if you could just clarify why, it'd be great.
Um, I'm rolling over to answer that for you, Mindy Jo. Um, so the town hall is open and it's public. But just, you know, it's, we lock the doors at night when we leave. Being a public building doesn't mean that anyone can just come in whenever they want and go over wherever they want and touch whatever they want. Um, so we have parts when we're open, we have parts of the building that are going to be. People can walk in during the day, there'll be a reception area, there's going to be, you know. But we do have offices where confidential things happen. People's paychecks are being run. There's secure documents, there's HR documents. So even though this is a, yes, the taxpayer dollars have paid for this, there is business that we do that is still confidential and private. And um, you know.
I understand that part, Miss Rebecca, what I was saying, and I understand you don't want people just running in and out of there and, yeah, I wouldn't want that either. Somebody like me that hasn't been in that building at all, why wouldn't I be able to make arrangements to come in and scope out the whole thing? The whole thing. So I could see exactly what's up and then make my way out. I'm not saying just come in and wander, no. That would be, that would be unruly, you know what I'm saying?
Yeah, I do. So, yeah, absolutely, Mindy.
It's like somebody like me, I haven't seen it, didn't see the plans, wasn't involved in anything when this all began. And I wanted to come in and say, okay, so how do I get to, say, the tax, the tax office? Now, do I have, do I have, uh, am I able to go and talk to Ellen at her office? Can I request that or is that just gonna be like taboo off limits? That's, I guess maybe that's what I'm trying to say. Remember, I don't word things right.
No, you're good, Mindy. Listen, I understand what you're asking. Number one, I come here when I'm here. I'd love to show you the whole office. Um, and absolutely, anyone can make an arrangement and get a tour of the whole place, every.
And of course you can. I mean, for somebody like me, sometimes I'll have four dogs, sometimes I'll have two dogs, sometimes I'll have six dogs because I am a rescuer. Okay, and sometimes people are in a jam and they have no place to put their animal and second chance has a weightless that would scare you. In fact, right now, they're only taking kittens. So, um, something like that, I don't understand. How would I answer a dog census?
I think it's for the dogs that you own personally.
Yeah, I don't think it's if you're fostering it.
So I guess that, that, that leads me to what business is it of anybody's and what dog I own. I don't understand.
Requirement, it's a state statute. It's in the state statutes that a dog census is done.
Just like the licensing, because part of the licensing deal is to make sure that you've got all your vaccinations done for your.
Yeah, that's a whole new situation all its own, but I thank you for your time this evening.
Well, that's all.
Thanks, Mindy.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good night, be safe, God bless.
God bless. And we do plan on having a open house at some point.
Let's have an open house.
I would love to have an ice cream social.
And I think that we're gonna do that.
Hot fuck Sundays? Yes, I'm in.
A Sunday bar, but when we have the schoolhouse, because then we'll do tours.
Yes.
You'll do tours.
Anyone else, Megan?
There's no one else raising their hand.
I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Don't move.
Finally.
Second.
All those in favor? Have a good night, everyone. Thank you.
Cat TV is celebrating thirty years of community media. Help support Cat TV's next thirty years by becoming a member today. Your membership will help us continue covering meaningful, local content.